Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, March 10th, 2025. Let the record reflect, meeting starting at 6:30. Would you please, I'm sorry, would like to make note that all councilors are present this evening with the inclusion of City Administrator Mahenko. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item four this evening, and there is no general. Item five is Committee Correspondence to Council. Are there any committee members wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone. Moving on to item six this evening, that is Public Comment. If there are any members of the public wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address council.
Good evening. Thank you. Sandra Gay, 52 Cumberland Avenue. And I'm here to speak about an item that's an action item later on, the 195 Ocean Park Road Resolution. And partly because during the public hearing, or at the public hearing, we didn't have the opportunity of having the VHB report, which we now have available to us. And I would like to actually encourage the council to not take action tonight on the resolution or sign that resolution until there's more specific information available about the Saco intersection, the impact on the side roads in Saco, the option of using some kind of delayed lighting or changing the signalization in lighting. It's something that I had actually brought up to Pat Fox a while ago, was told that that wasn't possible, and it may not be possible, but I'd never really heard the reason why there couldn't be a delayed red light, a green light in each direction to ease up some of the conflict there. And also, I was concerned at the last meeting when I heard that there wasn't really any consideration of the impact of closing off that intersection on side roads, and especially King Street, which is already a difficult, difficult and busy, busy street as it is. Just one second. And the other thing, I guess I would encourage the council to consider is having an independent traffic engineer review this report and the recommendations for that intersection on behalf of the city of Saco specifically, and to take a closer look at that. And the one other thing, as I noticed in the VHB report, is they have the long-range suggestion to make that ramp two lanes. They have an immediate suggestion to close off that intersection, and in the long range, to make that off-ramp two lanes, which, if you're going to close off that intersection, you don't need to make that two lanes because everybody's going to be turning right. But I would also encourage taking a look at making that two lanes more of an intermediate range. I understand there may be a little bit more costs associated with it, but also I think that that's something that could really help alleviate a lot of that conflict at that intersection, if people knew who was, who were going right and knew who were going straight, if it was more clearly marked. And the one other thing I'll say about that intersection is a blinking no-left-turn light would be really helpful there, since people are still going down there at the end of the ramp and turning left and causing a lot of conflict with cars that are coming out of Ocean Park Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors, City Administrator Brohanko, Bob Hamblin, 347 Ferry Road here in Saco. Didn't want to forget anything, so I typed it up ahead of time. I'll try to put a little inflection in, just to keep you on the edge of your seats. It's 2025. Include a pedestrian and bicycle component for the I-195 Ocean Park Road project that includes a connection to the Eastern Trail. If the resolution for the I-195 and Ocean Park Road feasibility study moves forward with the council's approval this evening, Saco residents would be poorly served with anything less than a well-designed and constructed connection to the Eastern Trail, which is immediately adjacent to the Exit 2A portion of the project. In November 2007, Saco voters were asked to support a half-million-dollar bond to help with design and construction of the Saco section of the Eastern Trail, which involves a 3.7-mile section from Milliken Mills Road in Old Orchard Beach to Clark Street in Saco. The bond passed with 62% of the vote. Little history lesson there for some of you. In spring 2012, a ribbon cutting was held at Thornton Academy for the newest section of the Eastern Trail, the Eastern Trail, of course, being a regional multi-use trail that connects communities from Kittery to South Portland. The ceremony was held at Thornton Academy, which itself had granted a significant easement, allowing the trail to be constructed along the westerly boundary of its property. Saco residents have consistently expressed their support for trails and sidewalks and infrastructure that will allow safe passage by bicycles and pedestrians, as noted in comprehensive plan updates and community surveys over the years. The Eastern Trail has flourished, as both young and old have demonstrated, have demonstrated with their use and enjoyment of the trail in the years since its opening. Now, the city, in conjunction with Old Orchard Beach and the main DOT, is considering whether to partner on much-needed improvements to I-195, Ocean Park Road, and the halfway intersection in Old Orchard Beach. If the, excuse me, if this advances beyond tonight's vote, both towns would be best served if a complete streets approach to the project is adopted by the project team. That is, improve these busy corridors for all users, not just motorists. I'm hurrying. Take a look at Ocean Park Road. There's a sidewalk that turns the corner at the Main Street and Ocean Park Road intersection and ends at Borough Street, just a couple of hundred feet down. The majority of Ocean Park Road is not served by a public sidewalk. There are paved shoulders for the length of Ocean Park Road, which present an opportunity to install signage and to identify the shoulders as being for the use of bicyclists and pedestrians. Better yet, a sidewalk and a bike lane on each side. If this project goes forward as presented to the council and community at the February 24th meeting, the city of Saco, the town of Old Orchard Beach, and the main DOT will be perpetuating the 1950s approach to improving the public way. And that was, it's all about cars and trucks, and pedestrians and bicyclists are an afterthought that don't count for much. It's 2025, time to lay the groundwork for an improved future rather than staying stuck in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Good evening, council. My name's Patrick Conlin. I live at 79 Granite Street in Bitterford. I'm the founder of Bike Bitterford-Saco Bicycle Advocacy Organization. I'm the trail manager for the Eastern Trail and friends with the Saco Beat Pack. I would agree pretty much with everything that Bob just said. As, as someone who's on the trail quite a bit as the trail manager, the intersection where the trail crosses, the slip, the slip lane and the, and the lane going forward there onto Route 1, it's always sketchy there. Cars fill the slip lane. You're not sure if you can go between them. You have to get drivers' attention, make sure that they know you're there, that you're going to try to cross. And the other part where you have to cross, actually, in some ways, is safer because they have a traffic light, so they stay back and you can get across. And I mean the lanes that are going straight, you know, to go across. The, the latest edition of the NATCO Urban Design Guide, which is, NATCO is the National Association of City Transportation officials. In the most recent edition, which just came out, they say the elimination of slip lanes at intersections is generally encouraged as it promotes safer and more pedestrian-friendly street design, often advocating for removing unnecessary turn lanes and slip lanes to create more compact intersections with reduced traffic speeds and improved visibility for all. So I think what you guys are talking about is eliminating or not, or allowing the cars to go straight through the intersection to go down Ocean Park Road, which, I don't know, I feel like the slip lane's the bigger problem, especially for people like trying to use the Eastern Trail. The slip lane is the problem, and it's, it's where we're going in terms of street design these days. This study from VHB is quite a number of years old, and they don't propose that in there at all. The, in that intersection has, has, from what I saw on the, the maps, like 19 crashes in 2024. The other intersections that are part of this 195 study have a lot less. So that's like, that's the really bad one. So that's my suggestion. Look at the slip lane. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please step forward. Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item seven this evening is the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for March 3rd, 2025?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Berman. Any discussion on the minutes?
I'll second that motion. Mayor?
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes passes 7-0. Okay, moving on to item nine this evening, action items. Item A?
Madam Mayor, there's a consent.
Oh, thank you. Need new glasses. I'm missing everything.
I'd give you mine, but I need mine.
Maybe just need to clean them. All right. Item eight, consent items this evening, is item A, to confirm the mayor's reappointment to the Coastal Waters Commission of Jonathan Stafford and Alan Shepherd. Is there a motion for the consent items?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion on the item? Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Trish, uh, Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Berman? Johnston?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Yes, we'll blame it on the time change. Motion for the consent item passes 7-0. Busy day at work, got the regular job today. Moving on to item nine this evening, action items now. Item A is one reading, and that's the confirmation of the city administrator's appointment to the Public Works Director, and that is Councilor Edwards.
Yes. The city of Saco recommends appointing Travis Moore as Saco's next Public Works Director effective Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, following council confirmation. With nearly two decades of experience in municipal and state public works operations, Travis Moore brings a wealth of knowledge in infrastructure management, budgeting, and departmental leadership. Moore has been an integral part of Saco's Public Works Department for just under five years as deputy director before stepping into the role of interim director in 2024. In these roles, Moore has overseen multimillion-dollar budgets, developed capital improvement plans, and managed a team of more than 40 employees across various public works divisions. In addition to Moore's experience with the Public Works Department, he spent over a decade with the main Department of Transportation, holding leadership positions including region manager and transportation operation manager during his tenure. There, he managed large-scale infrastructure projects, supervised regional operations, and ensued, ensured the efficient use of state resources. As Public Works Director, Moore will, Moore will continue to enhance Saco's infrastructure, improve operational efficiency, and foster strong relationships with city officials, staff, and residents. We are confident that Moore's leadership will contribute to the continued growth and sustainability of Saco's Public Works Initiative. Be it ordered that the city council confirm the city administrator's appointment of Travis Moore as Public Works Director effective March 11th, 2025, I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Councilor Edwards. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hewitt. Any discussion or comments on the item? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Congratulations, Director Moore. Okay, now, moving on to item B, and that's one reading, and that's the confirmation of the city administrator's appointment of the Finance Director, and that is Councilor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. In accordance with Section 5.03 of the City Charter, 4-11 of the City Code, and Title 30-A, Section 2603, the city of Saco recommends appointing Jennifer Henderson as Finance Director and Treasurer effective June 1st, 2025. With an extensive background in accounting and financial management, Jennifer Henderson brings over 15 years of professional experience to the role of Controller for the city of Saco. Her expertise spans corporate accounting, financial integration, compliance, and process improvement, making her an asset to the city of Saco's finance department and leadership team. Henderson earned her Masters of, a Master of Accountancy from the University of Texas at San Antonio, and her Bachelor of Science in Accountancy from Missouri State University. She is known for her attention to detail, adept problem-solving skills, and ability to foster collaborative relationships across teams. Henderson's appointment as interim treasurer and her assistance during the department transition have enabled Jennifer to demonstrate her competence to perform the role of Finance Director effective June 1st, 2025, when Judy Belanger finishes her assignment as interim Finance Director. Be it ordered that the city council confirm the city administrator's appointment of Jennifer Henderson, Finance Director, effective June 1st, 2025, I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Edwards. Any discussion or comments on the item? Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Congratulations, Director Henderson. Okay, now, moving on to item C, and that's one reading of the memorandum of agreement, an MOA, to form a partnership to conduct a corridor study of the U.S. Route 1 from Bitterford to Freeport. And this is the Reimagining Route 1 Initiative, and that is Councilor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Greater Portland Council of Governments, or GP COG, has asked the city of Saco to join a partnership to support the Reimagining Route 1 project. This project will study the Route 1 corridor from Bitterford at the Rundle Town Line to Freeport at the Brunswick Town Line, aiming to create a shared vision for the future of this section of Route 1. The project delivers, deliverables are outlined in the attached MOA and include, but are not limited to analyzing the corridor, maps, recommended, recommended corridor improvements and concept plans. The MOA is between GP COG, the main Department of Transportation, and the municipalities of Bitterford, Saco, Old Orchard Beach, Scarborough, South Portland, Portland, Falmouth, Cumberland, Yarmouth, and Freeport. This is an excellent opportunity for the city to participate in a regional initiative that prioritizes, prioritizes a more complete street with support for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists. Be it ordered that the city council approves the memorandum of agreement between Greater Portland Council of Governments, main Department of Transportation, and the municipalities of Bitterford, Saco, Old Orchard Beach, Scarborough, South Portland, Portland, Falmouth, Cumberland, Yarmouth, and Freeport, and to further authorize the city administrator to sign the memorandum of agreement, I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Councilor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion on the item? Councilor Hatch, then Council-
Your hand was first.
Okay, all right. Councilor Hatch, then Councilor Johnston.
I would have given it up for you. I just want to publicly clarify what we understood, that this, this is a, an agreement to provide-
Councilor Hatch, then Councilor Johnston.
I would have given it up for you. I just want to publicly clarify what we understood, that this is an agreement to provide data, and there's no funding commitment associated with this. And I read through the memorandum, and I can see that that is, that what I'm describing is true. So I just, for the public, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Thank you.
Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I just, again, I think it's overall good in principle, and I support it. I think it's always good to kind of take that regional look at things, but at the same time, I think it's important we recognize during this process that Saco's Route One is, or may be drastically different than other Route Ones. And something I've seen that has become rather prevailing throughout municipalities over the last ten-plus years I've been on council, and it's not just here in Saco, it is statewide, is you tend to have these outside agencies, quasi-governmental agencies, that from my perspective are doing more and more of our planning being that of the elected bodies, which, again, we can't do it all, and I get that, but, and I'm not criticizing this plan because I did read through it too, and there is evidence of an intent to have feedback, but I just want to reiterate so that we're not having another example of item E on the agenda. The more opportunities for public engagement and elected leadership to have engagement during this process is for the better, really. I mean, ultimately, if we're going to accept the plan, I'd like to be involved in that plan, so it's just my two cents on it. Thank you.
Yep, noted. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I agree in principle to the idea of this study for the simple reason it does give us sort of a long-range look of the entire area, and any sort of, sometimes, you know, when you're the only people talking about your own community, sometimes it does help to have an outside person, though it doesn't have the, you know, necessarily tied to all the particulars. But as we are going to see in the next two items down, though, there is a detriment to that, obviously, when there's money involved and when plans are made and your community is not specifically involved to the level that you want to see, though. So as far as this goes, I like the idea of having this out there because what we're going to be able to do is then take it and see how it matches up with our own comprehensive plan, with our own long-range planning, and if it informs it, it's great. If it doesn't, then, well, everyone gets paid and it goes on the shelf, though. But either way, we're, you know, it's going to be, it's another tool that we can use to help sort of envision what we're going to do on our piece of Saco, because at the end of the day, it's still our call. So there you are. Thank you.
Could I ask Director Prescott to have anything to add to this?
Thank you, everyone. I enjoy hearing everyone's feedback here. I think it's really important to note how this study is starting out. We're coming to you first. So you're going to have the opportunity to ask, hey, where is that? What's going on with that study? We're kicking it off the right way. So I just wanted to make sure that was clarified, and you'll be able to ask a city administrator for any updates along the way. Study should be done around December. We were already giving input as staff, and there'll be other opportunities throughout. We're also integrating communications into more of our transportation planning. We've already set up a shared email distribution list, so internally, we're going to try to iron out some of these concerns that we might have seen on other studies.
And just to clarify, too, I think it was brought up, the fact that with this being PAX and GP COG, this is also going to kind of correlate into our Route One master plan development with the Long Range Planning Committee, right? Where PAX is working on that with us?
Yes.
So they will have specific insight to what we're looking to do, which will help then with the plan.
Definitely.
Council Berman?
Yeah, just, I guess I want to note that I really favor this regional approach and appreciate this plan because of that. Traffic on Route One through Saco doesn't all originate in Saco. It doesn't all end in Saco. Work done up and down Route One will affect traffic through our section of Route One as destinations are created or not. Development somewhere else will certainly influence it. So I think this kind of planning, which gives us that information, lets us know what's happening at a regional level, allows us to plan accordingly and adjust our plans with what towns up and down Route One are doing. So for me, I'm all for this. I think it's the right approach.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, moving on to item D, that is a public hearing for the special entertainment permit for the Fraternal Order of Eagles, the Saco Aerie Number 3792. That is Councilor Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Fraternal Order of Eagles, Doing Business As the Saco Eagles, Number 3792, has applied for renewal of their special entertainment permit. The permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment, Section 93-2. Clerk has also checked with code enforcement, finance, fire, and police department, and there were no concerns. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion has been made to open the public hearing by Councilor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Edwards. Roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, moving on to item D, that is a public hearing for the special entertainment permit for the Fraternal Order of Eagles, the Saco Aerie Number 3792. That is Councilor Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Fraternal Order of Eagles, Doing Business As the Saco Eagles, Number 3792, has applied for renewal of their special entertainment permit. The permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Councilor Johnston. Is there a second? Second? Second by Councilor Hewitt. Any discussion or comments on the item? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, just for the benefit of council, you know, as we've already seen, city departments sign off on this, I just want to advocate or say on behalf of myself, as a resident of the ward, but, you know, the Eagles Club is maybe a block away from me, and my experience with them has always been, they've been a great addition to the neighborhood over there. They don't cause any problems, and overall, they do a good service for the community. So just given that report that I don't have any complaints, I've never had a complaint. That is all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, going on to item E, that is one reading of the I-95 Ocean Park Road Resolution, and that is Councilor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The City of Saco and the town of Old Orchard Beach, in collaboration with the main DOT and others, worked on a transportation feasibility study for the Interstate 195 and Ocean Park Road Corridor. Purpose of the study was to evaluate safety, mobility, and traffic calming improvements within this area. The City of Saco has been asked by the town of Old Orchard Beach to endorse the enclosed resolution supporting future funding and implementation efforts to bring improvements to this corridor. There will be future opportunity for public comment and input as the next phases progress. Be it ordered that the city council adopt the resolution for the Interstate 195 and Ocean Park Road feasibility study, understanding that the City of Saco will provide future public comment and input opportunity on any next phases. I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Councilor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Edwards? Berman, I'm sorry, thank you. Okay, motion made by Councilor Gunn, second by Councilor Berman. Any discussion on the item?
Mayor?
Yes, any administrator?
Just want to note that there are two resolutions in here. You'll see that first resolution is the one that was talked about at the last meeting relative to making changes in the last paragraph. Also, then you have the other resolution that was presented at the last meeting that precipitated getting changes. So there are two resolutions there, so I think there needs to be a distinction if one or the other goes ahead.
Councilor Johnston?
Yeah, just for clarification purposes, since Councilor Gunn made the motion, could you clarify which resolution you are interested in presenting?
Most certainly. For clarification purposes, the first resolution, the resolution that was in the packet last week, not the revised one that was added to our pack this week, is the resolution that I would consider putting forward.
So in your packet, if I might? That is the Resolution Two. Resolution One is the revised.
To be clear, I'm going to, if the mayor will indulge me, I'm going to, just so there's clarity, it's the one that says, for number five, the City of Saco, let me see, just want to make sure I get the right one here. The City of Saco has concerns with the exit to a proposed design and requires that access to Ocean Park Road be maintained. The City of Saco endorses the remainder of the proposed study. That is the proposal that I'm putting in.
Madam Mayor, I apologize for the confusion, but then I wish to withdraw my second.
Thank you. Okay, with Councilor Berman's withdrawal, is there a second? Okay, not seeing a second. Motion fails. Okay, that takes us to item number 10 this evening, and that is the administrative update. City Administrator Behanko.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first one I'd like to talk about is the Bitterford Elm Street construction project. And if I might ask Deputy Police Chief to come forward, just to give a little bit, because this is going to be a significant impact on the city in the next few months, and I'll read some of it as he comes forward. The City of Bitterford will be performing a sewer separation project on Elm Street and Hooper Street beginning in the spring of 2025. The project will be replacing a water main, gas main, and installing new storm drain line in Elm Street between the intersections with Diamond Street, the intersection with Main Street, Elm Street. In Bitterford, will be restricted, excuse me, restricted to southbound traffic only. All northbound traffic traveling on Elm Street in Bitterford will be detoured on Main Street into Saco. The project is scheduled to begin in April 1st, with the Elm Street being restricted to one lane beginning April 28th. Additional information will be provided when Bitterford provides a finalized construction schedule. The project is scheduled to take four to six months to complete. I would ask the deputy chief to maybe just indicate what he's been doing, to meet with representatives from Bitterford, and just so that everybody's on the same page with this project.
Yes, thank you, City Administrator Behanko, and good evening, councilors. Yeah, so we met with the City of Bitterford's Public Works. We had a meeting the other day to really understand what that's going to impact for Saco. What that will impact is, once they start their construction project of the sewer separation on Elm Street, it's going to require that all traffic northbound coming from Bitterford will be diverted to our Main Street. There will be allowed southbound traffic going to Bitterford, but there'll be no northbound traffic allowed coming through Bitterford. So we also have that coming up on our Traffic Safety Committee on the 20th to talk about that. We're also talking with DOT, looking at options we can do to traffic calming along our Main Street as traffic moves up through that corridor.
Thank you, Deputy.
Thank you.
We want to take questions on that individual item first while we have?
Sure, sure.
Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Deputy Chief Hunter, I'm just going to float something out there that I've heard. I don't know how reasonable it is or how feasible it is, but there was mention of whether or not we could connect with the main turnpike authority and allow no tolls to be charged from Bitterford to Saco or Saco to Bitterford during this construction period to try to encourage people to use the turnpike as a connector. You know more about this than I do. It was just an idea that I thought I'd throw out there. Maybe you've considered it already, maybe it's impossible, I don't know.
So I do know that Bitterford City Councilors had asked that question, and the Bitterford Public Works did meet with the MTA, and to this point, that has not been approved.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Deputy.
Thank you. City Administrator?
Excuse me, the next item deals with Saco Bay Symposium. On Monday, March 17th, the City of Saco and Save Our Shore Saco Bay will hold the sixth and annual Saco Bay Symposium from 9:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. in the Saco City Hall Auditorium. Panelists will include government officials, scientists, and experts who will talk about the latest developments in the effort to remediate erosion in Saco Bay. And the event will be streamed live on the City of Saco Government Facebook page and the City of Saco YouTube channel. Upcoming meetings, the March 17th, the school superintendent will present his anticipated school board budget presentation for fiscal year '26, and there'll be a presentation on the housing plan. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the city administrator? Okay, not seeing any. That's moving on to item 11, and that is council discussion and comment. Any councilors wishing to provide updates? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Just a couple of high-level comments. First of all, I found, and kudos to City Administrator Behanko and staff, we requested that VHB study last week, and we all got it rather quickly, so I appreciate getting my hands on it, and I can honestly say that it had a pretty significant impact on my feelings this evening when I came to deal with that issue. And secondly, I just wanted to suggest that the way these appointments came to us tonight, I thought was very well done. I think it's important for not only we as councilors, which we knew this information, but that the public sees that there's competency behind these names and the experiences that they bring, the educational backgrounds that they bring, I think are important for the public to hear. So I just wanted to encourage a continued pattern of this when we have future appointments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a couple of just points I want to make. First, I'm pleased that the council decided not to go forward with the resolution. That being the case, I did want to make point that when we debated over the last couple weeks, the issue of traffic safety in that intersection, which I know Councilor Berman spoke to many times, I want to say is a pertinent issue, that's a legitimate issue, and something that the city, I think, on its own or in our own potential partnership with DOT or GP COG, whether it's part of this feasibility study that we just agreed to a couple minutes ago or on our own volition, I think it's something worth looking at. Of course, I was primarily focused on the proposal to close 2A access, though, when I under, let's just say it was not my focus, though, but when I had folks from my ward and from across the city come in and talk about the Complete Streets Initiative and how the study that was presented to us, both the Old Orchard Beach DOT study and the study from 2020 that informed what was going to happen on the Saco side, I did find it lacking in terms of the Complete Streets Initiative, in terms of bicycle safety, in terms of improving the Eastern Trail, not to mention some common sense measures that a couple speakers here tonight and the last couple weeks, as well as myself, have mentioned about, you know, the subject of resignalization was not reflected in 2020 study, nor was it in this previous one. In the previous 2020 study, I did appreciate that they did acknowledge that perhaps making the 2A ramp as a two-lane thruway down to encourage separation of that traffic, which the public is already doing ad hoc. I appreciate that it was already in there, so you saw they at least were thinking about it. And I appreciate the idea of other traffic mitigation efforts in terms of lights, signaling, et cetera, though. So I don't consider this the end of this process for improving safety in that intersection. I mean, after all, it is my neighborhood, and I am certainly concerned about keeping people safe in that neighborhood. safe in that neighborhood. I simply, now that we have, we're free of constraints with DOT and the Old Orchard Beach study, which I wish them all the luck on. I mean, honestly, their major situation was getting the halfway intersection fixed, and honestly, I wish them all the luck in that, though, because that is a major problem for that community, and hopefully they can get something done. That being the case, we do have an opportunity to reimagine our side of the line on our terms in a way that makes sense for the city of Saco, and I look forward to future discussions, perhaps in a workshop format, where we can look at what 2020 talked about and kind of bring in what was mentioned both by our constituents and our emails that we got, and also here tonight and the last couple of weeks, because it really does speak to a much bigger picture that I think would have been left off the table had we simply signed on to the Old Orchard Beach project, which have been focused on the intersection itself and the traffic mitigation efforts, though. But the other piece of the puzzle, though, was kind of left off, though, so I think we made a prudent move tonight, but it's certainly, I think it's the end of that chapter, but it's the beginning of the next chapter in terms of how we reimagine that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Berman? Counselor Johnston first?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, likewise, I think, you know, it's important, obviously, the resolution failed for lack of a second, but I still think it's important that I express, you know, my continued concerns with that resolution. I would have been a no vote on it had it gotten before us. That doesn't mean, as I said last week, I do appreciate all the effort that, you know, state agencies went through to bring something forward, or even, you know, our own attempts at mending the resolution. However, I sit here with that same feeling I did two, three weeks ago from the start with this, which is, you know, this does benefit Old Orchard Beach drastically, in my opinion. I think it's a huge improvement, and I would support that. However, it, in my opinion, does likely more harm to established neighborhoods in the city of Saco, and again, from my perspective, it would have been appreciated more had we done a more in-depth study onto the impacts in the city of Saco, not just at that intersection, but, you know, how that trickled down into our other established neighborhoods. And so, if we move forward with anything, that would certainly be something I would want us to focus on. In the end, that might be the only result, right? That might be the only option. I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but to put my name on something when we didn't do our due diligence, I've just seen it too many times before where something's gone through, and then we're kicking ourselves, going, well, we didn't really think about that element of it. And there's recent examples of that, and obviously, no solution would be perfect, but here, I feel like, as I said from the get-go, we were kind of just piggybacking on a plan. It was like, oh yeah, well, we kind of got to take care of Saco, too, without the adequate amount of effort that needed to take place for, you know, a good solution for Saco. So, I hope the state hears that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Berman, then Counselor Redwoods.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I echo most of what Counselor Gunn and Johnston just said. These intersections are critical areas that need study and need work, especially the Main Street exit two A intersection, which is one of the most dangerous in the region. And my withdrawal of my seconds and lack of support for it really comes down to two things. One is, I think if Saco had been engaged earlier in the process, and we had our public input prior to the drafting of the final report, some of our concerns might have been met more clearly. When I read the VHB study, the older study, I find they suggested making the off-ramp two lanes as well as rerouting traffic down I-195 to Ocean Park Road, while they ultimately recommended closing down the two A exit. It's not clear the rationale for that decision, and in fact, both are suggested, and both have similar cost ranges. And the lack of rationale in that study that was then just automatically forwarded to the new study, I think, caused me some concern. We also heard from members of the BPAC tonight and friends of the BPAC during the public hearing about the lack of consideration for PED and bike access, and I think that would have been resolved, too, had Saco citizens been resolved or been involved earlier in the process. We have a BPAC, they're here, they want to do this kind of work, but we're not engaged in this process either. So, I sincerely hope that this work moves forward, and we don't stop looking at these intersections and for solutions. We absolutely need to, but I do hope we take this as an opportunity to either revisit this study or take part in a future one that brings in Saco citizens earlier, addresses some of our critical concerns in a more thorough way, and allows us to partner in a way that really benefits our city and our users more directly. I was concerned that if we passed this resolution, it would tie us into a process that isn't optimal, and I wasn't sure what the opportunities for future engagement would look like once we'd endorsed a plan that I think had some significant flaws.
Thank you very much. Counselor Redwoods?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. One, the road closure on Elm and rerouting traffic onto Main Street in Saco will provide a hardship for one of the groups I liaison for, Saco Main Street, as there are two festivals, right, on that street, but I believe that, you know, they will be able to figure out something, but just maybe in a larger sense, maybe thinking about activities on Main Street. With all the talk of traffic, it just seems like traffic is getting heavier, and maybe there needs to be another solution for events on Main Street. Also, I won't be here next Monday, so forced vacation, like another counselor, so ahead recently. So, I look forward to seeing you all on video next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to item 13, this is item 12, that is executive session, is there a motion? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. We had ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to our MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6E, consultation between the municipality and its attorney.
Thank you. A motion has been made to enter into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. We'll call vote. Counselor Redwoods?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes to enter into executive session at 7:18, 6:1. And we will be downstairs in the conference room.
Okay, welcome back everyone. Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to exit executive session passes seven zero at eight thirty. Is there a report?
There's no report, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, taking us to item fourteen is the adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn this evening?
Yes.
Councilor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn at 8:30. Is there a report?
There's no report, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, taking us to item 14 is the adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn this evening?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Edwards. Roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn at 8:31. Passes 7-0 at 8:30. And thank you everyone and have a great evening.